...able to have a productive and civil discussion about this issue. People on both sides presenting the way they feel about this, and it's good that we can do this. To begin with, Mr. Coell expressed concerns about archaeology. And I've been in this chamber before for other issues, most notably Rattlesnake Island, with members of the Native American community begging him to trigger an environmental review for archaeological purposes. And in those instances, he didn't seem to be concerned. And so his concern about archaeology for this one particular targeted issue is curious to me. I'd like to see those kinds of things enforced across the board and not just in this particular issue.
Herb, I made this at the beginning, and you weren't here then. I was going to ask if you talked to the commission and not about persons in the room?
Well, yeah, I don't mean personally about him. I just mean in his capacity as...
I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry.
...about CEQA and all that.
All right. Everybody who talks about this issue, politicians, members of the Board of Supervisors, law enforcement, they always preface their remarks by saying, "I don't want to deny..." Nobody wants to deny these patients' access to their medicine. And this ordinance would do exactly that for many people. People who just want to have a couple of plants in their backyard won't be allowed to do that. So it forces people who are now just doing that into criminal behavior. It drives what's now out in the open in towns where law enforcement can keep an eye on it. It drives people underground. It drives people into illegal growing. It creates...it makes criminal acts out of things that are no longer...that are not criminal acts now. I'd say just about every one of the slides that we saw today depicted things that are already illegal under current...there are currently ordinances that make illegal grading, illegal structures, illegal wiring. All those things are already illegal. So why don't we use the laws that we already have to enforce those things instead of creating a whole new body of laws which will just complicate the issue? Why not use the laws that we've spent a long time developing to mitigate these things rather than to create laws to deal with issues that aren't really issues? There are already lawyers lining up to poke holes in this ordinance. You heard from Mr. Robey that it runs afoul of CEQA, which it does. It also runs afoul of the spirit of Prop 215, of the Attorney General's guidelines, which the entire purpose of Prop 215 was so that individuals could have access to be able to grow a few plants. Most people don't live on 20-acre parcels. Most of the patients that Prop 215 addresses don't live in places where they'll be able to just take care of their own needs. So it creates a whole commercial genre of growing instead of having people being able to just take care of their own needs. I'm not a fan of commercial growers. I live in a place that's got too much commercial activity. I think that where there's a lot of commercial activity in places that aren't zoned for it, we have ordinances in place to deal with that. Where there's an environmental impact, we have ordinances in place to deal with that. This law would not deal with all of the illegal grows that are taking place in national forests and other places like that. It doesn't address any of that stuff at all, and it doesn't particularly address those things that were in the slideshow. So I don't want to see the county get bogged down in endless litigation. There's no reason for that. There are a lot of stakeholders in this room and throughout the county who would like to be involved in the discussion about what kind of ordinance needs to be passed. It's a complex issue. This reduces it down to almost a prohibition, and that's not the way to do this. You're going to put the county in court for months and months and years. The first time that somebody finds themselves being prosecuted under this new ordinance, they're going to take it to a civil court and challenge this ordinance. And why not circumvent that by passing a more reasonable proposition in the first place? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Paul Cole from Upper Lake. I've owned property in Lake County for 35 years. I've been around a while and just know a few things about Lake County. And I've seen how Lake County likes to handle these marijuana issues. They just like to step all over the citizens of Lake County and do illegally, knowingly illegal things like their law that they made last year. They knowingly made an illegal law, knew it wouldn't be valid, force 400 people to show up for an emergency ordinance, and then it's invalidated by the court with some of the people at the hearing, told them in the first place, "You can't make a law that makes something illegal, something you already did, and then declare it illegal, and then call you a nuisance and arrest you." That's an example of the kind of things they're doing. This law, I just need to read for everybody because the Board of Supervisors refuses to read Proposition 8420. Have any of you read 8420? I didn't think so. If you're going to do your job, you're going to have to know the law.
Yeah.
You're going to have to do a lawful job, not just somebody's ideas, maybe we ought to have six plants per acre, maybe 12. You have to obey the law. And I advise you all to read the law because you are representatives of the county, and whatever law comes out of here and goes to the Board, it's going to become law. And if you screw up, we're going to get sued again. I just want to...so then, since most people don't know the law, refuse to read it, I'm just going to read one significant part of A B S B 420. 1136 2.778. "A qualified patient or primary giver may possess no more than eight ounces of dried marijuana per qualified patient. In addition, a qualified patient or primary giver may also maintain no more than six mature or 12 immature marijuana plants per qualified patient." It doesn't say anything in here about they have to have four acres of land, they can't live in the city, they have to grow it indoors, they have to grow it outdoors. There are no restrictions. This is a blanket permission for any medical marijuana patient to have six plants, and not even this county has any authority to remove that. It says here, "The Attorney General may recommend modifications to the possession or cultivation limits set forth in this section. These recommendations shall be made to the legislature no later than December 1, 2005, and may be made only after public comment. Any recommended modification shall be consistent with the intent of this article and shall be based on currently available scientific research." And again, there's no scientific research. They have to prevent evidence of the damage being caused. They have to prevent evidence that if a person grows six plants in their yard, they're going to bother their neighbor. They have to present evidence, especially they're going to try and tell us what we can do in our house, that we are only allowed to have a 10-by-10 growing area in our house. Now, I want to see scientific proof that I could provide myself with six marijuana plants inside my house in a 10-by-10 growing area. And what happens if I live in an 8-by-36 house trailer? People in house trailers give up half your trailer or whatever. This is ridiculous. They have no authority, the county has no authority to do some of these things. As far as an individual right, an individual has a right to six marijuana plants, and nobody, nobody can make a law against that. The laws of this county, the county refers to a brand-new law that gives us the authority to make these new laws that they're presenting today. I have a copy of the law here. It's Sidney and Riverside versus somebody else. Well, that law goes in great detail, and I advise you all to read this. It's in the purpose of this ordinance that we're reviewing today. I advise you all to read it. It goes over detail after detail of the real medical rights of a medical marijuana patient and the legal rights of the state. And that whole law dealt with collective, cooperative grows and dispensaries. That law had nothing to do with individuals. It does not affect this thing. Only the Attorney General may reduce the amounts legal for possession. Only the Attorney General. This county is not the Attorney General.
Yeah.
This department's not the Attorney General or Supervisors, nor is the county attorney. Only the Attorney General can reduce the amount. So if I live, I don't care if I live in an apartment building in Lakeport with five hundred people that have marijuana and doctors' recommendations. We have a right to grow our 30 plants there if we choose. And now, if a person, everybody's, "Oh, what about the crime? What about the smell? What about all these other things?" As the previous speaker mentioned, if there's a gun involved, you call the county sheriff. If there's a dog involved, you call the animal control. If you don't like the smell, you call Lake County Air Quality Management District. Now, they're going to have to have a burden. They're going to have to figure out some way of measuring your smell. But we already have laws for all these things. It is not necessary to bring up the worst possible examples of marijuana growers in the preference to this law. And in so doing, you are defaming our character as a class of people, saying, "This always happens. People always have guns. People always have dogs. People always damage the environment. People always exceed the law." Well, I'm sorry, you don't have authority to do that. And I'm getting sick and tired of this county pushing around legal people who have a legal right to do things in this county and in this state. I'm not going to stand for any more of this BS, these illegal laws, just plain illegal. I read you the reason why. You cannot limit anybody, and you cannot tell me where they can grow. Only the Attorney General can do that. Period. So understand the law. You read it, I told you about it. Tell your attorney to read the law before she makes the law. And I'm not going to pay for a bunch of lawsuits caused by this frivolous law. I'm not going to accept you putting out illegal, completely unlawful, overbearing laws that are absolutely disagreeing with the current state laws. I'm not going to let...I'm a taxpayer. I'm not going to pay for any of my employees to put out that kind of crap. And I'm not going to pay for our city attorney or our Board, Supervisors, fast laws like that. So you be responsible. You know the law, it's before you allow it out of this thing. And this law obviously is way overboard. It goes far beyond its rights. They don't have the right to do this, and it is your job to make sure a legal, correct law comes out of here that is not going to get the county sued. I'm just sick and tired of this. I'm going to get together with Mr. Normal and everybody I can find, and I'm going to try to get together 100 people to donate $100, and that'll be enough to hire a lawyer. And we're going to start...stop talking. We're not going to talk about this. We're going to bring the law down on you. I'm mad at you. I'm mad at you. Read the law before you make the law.
Sir?
That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I'm going to write this, express my opinion.
Give him a copy, law. Give him a copy, law.
For a quick, maybe it was just to clarify for your commission, Mr. Cole said, have you asked if you'd read Proposition 8420? Did I understand correctly?
A B 420.
Because it sounded like Proposition, it said Proposition A B. That might have been confusion. It's not getting out 420.
So it sounded correct.
S B 420, Senate Bill.
S B, Senate Bill.
Well, he said A B began with.
Yeah, but he...
He meant S B.
All right. We're fully aware of Prop 215. Go ahead, man.
Hi, my name is Lisa Gottes. I am, just to let you know who I am, so you understand my position on this. I have been a nurse since 1991. I've taken care of many patients who have benefited from medical marijuana. And these are patients with contractable pain. That's pain that doesn't go away. The pain pills don't work. They can't tolerate them. They can't eat enough. We're talking chemo patients. We're talking terminally ill patients, AIDS patients, rumored arthritis patients, and MS patients who can't move. There's also research that it's helped PTSD patients. That said, I think that we have a definite problem in this county, and I appreciate the efforts of all of you people to try to address that. I live in an area where there are lots of grows. I'm probably one of the only people who don't grow. I myself am disabled. I could choose to use medical marijuana. I've chosen not to use pain pills. I use alternative methods for my pain control, stretching, tendons, that kind of thing. That's my personal choice. I do support the need for medical marijuana patients who truly need it to be able to access a substance that helps them with their pain and improves their appetite, allows them to take enough nutrition to actually treat the illnesses and to save their lives in some cases. If they're getting enough nutrition, they will be the ones. However, I can say, I'd like to throw some of the comments about the smell. I live in a primarily ag area. Like I said, I don't grow, but I'm surrounded by the...there are...I've seen some of the terracing. There's a hillside that's been terraced, and it's been sitting there for three years eroding. And it's located right at the spot where there's a school bus stop at the intersection of two roads, right in the open. We recently had a marijuana bust in the valley last weekend. That bust was in plain view of the street, that grow, and it was far over the size of what they're required, allowed to have. And it was right in front of the school bus stop. So our kids are seeing this stuff, and it's okay. I don't support the commercial grows. I believe that this ordinance may be a little too restrictive in that it...I think that you could probably allow people to grow their allowed amount on other properties such as rural residential, as they've discussed, some of the other ag qualifications, some of the others. I think that maybe perhaps, I agree with the need to screen it off using the fence. I agree with the need to regulate the indoor buildings. I agree with the setback limitations in some cases. I think that as long as people...and I believe that those types of restrictions should be extended to people on smaller properties. I believe that in restricting grows to only 8 parcels larger than an acre, that it is affecting people who may be chronically ill, terminally ill, need to be able to access their treatment on medicine or whatever you want, their marijuana. They need to be able to access that for their treatment. And that those people are the ones who are primarily the most financially unable to do so as far as affording a big parcel. I believe that there's a dispensary, there's some dispensaries in the county. I've been informed there in Clear Lake. Correct me if I'm wrong. However, I can tell you that when I was having to go to physical therapy in Clear Lake from Upper Lake, that 45-mile drive killed me. And I got down there, I got my therapy, it made me feel better, and to drive 45 miles home, it did no good to even go there. And like I said, I don't use medical marijuana, but I do support for those people that do. I know that we have a problem. We have a doctor who's made millions giving recommendations to anybody who needs them. That's between them and the doctor. But I do agree that the commercial grows need to go. I don't know where the solution lies, but I do think that, as has been mentioned, that in limiting the ability of people on small parcels to grow, that you are discriminating against a, maybe not intentionally, but it is causing a class discrimination issue between those who can't afford and those who can. I do believe that they could be allowed...and also, I know that they're allowed to grow under the proposed ordinance, they'd be allowed to grow indoors. However, that takes money. Running a light 16 hours a day instead of daylight, it's free, takes money. They have hard time affording their P G D bills as it is. They can't even afford food. Sometimes it's a choice between their medicine and food. Medicare doesn't pay for their pills, even if they were able to get them. You know, they have to choose between paying their rent, paying their heat, paying their food. So I do think that it could be done on smaller parcels, perhaps maybe a smaller amount of plants, maybe having them screen it off in a backyard completely enclosed with setbacks, appropriate setbacks, as long as they can do that. I have a problem with that. I do, like I said, have a big problem with commercial grows. I had an unfortunate experience last year of having my car stall on a rural road, and I happened to stall right in front of a marijuana grow, a large one. And what did I look up to see coming through your tree at me? I saw an infrared scope, a green glow of it. Made my blood run cold. I'm lucky I got my car started, just because I was unfortunate enough to have my car stopped. I don't know what would have happened if I hadn't gotten out of there. But it's very big reality that we have people coming in from other places and growing. This, the Prop 215 wasn't designed to protect those commercial growers. And one of the problems that I see and hear all the time, and I get pretty upset about actually, is people saying that marijuana is an essential part of our economy. It's not supposed to be part of our economy. The Prop 215 was designed to help those people who need it for pain relief. The problem comes if you've got people growing it for pure profit, and they take it real personally when you cut off their income, but it shouldn't be their income. It's not designed for that. They're not being taxed on it, and it's actually against the law to do so. So I do support the thing. I just think that it needs some rework as far as the property size. I think that smaller parcels, there is a way to work that. And I think that perhaps, and the ag only kind of bothers me, like you said, people mentioning this, concentrated in Kelsey. Now, I don't live in Kelseyville, but I feel really sorry for people who live in that ag block in Kelseyville, if all the co-ops go there, because the odor is overpowering. I'm surrounded by grows. I smell them no matter which way the wind blows, I'm smelling it. I can't open my windows on a warm day. I have dairy goats, and I'll tell you what, this time of year, those buckos stink. They're in rut, that you can smell them from 20 yards, and the marijuana coming from properties 30 acres, 40 acres away from me when the wind's blowing, overpowers those goats. And that's hard to do. So I'm kind of, I guess I'm kind of on the fence with it. I don't do it myself, but I don't hold against people who need it. I believe if they're within law, they have that right, but I see a real problem with the allowing it only on 20-acre egg parcels and not for smaller grows who probably are the ones who need it the most.
My name is Andrew Simmons. Just like to address everyone up here. Don't forget to write your income. I missed the first part of the meeting, so I did miss everything that was shown up here. But I would speak on behalf of what I do know. I do know that prohibition does not work, and this that you're creating is basically prohibition has been stated before by the people. You can't prevent people from growing medicine in their backyard. People who truly need it, most of them do little small parcels. Most of them cannot afford to come to...I own a store that sells gardening supplies. Most of them cannot afford to come buy a $300 light setup, also buy the $200 inline fan deducting the...sorry, I'm not remembering everything right now because I'm a little flustered, but roughly you're talking $1,000 to $1,500 before someone even puts plants and soil inside. Well, they can come buy soil from me and put it in a growing container outside, and there's all this God-given free sun that cannabis should be grown under. And as stated before, if you want to kill cancer, if you want to kill pain, if you want to do all the serious things that cannabis has capabilities of doing, they can't be grown inside. I believe everyone on the matter needs to be more educated. I believe we need a lot more time before any final decisions are made. If given time, I would love to present each and every one of you here with probably more information than you'll have time to read on reasons why we should not be preventing people from medicine, but instead should be embracing this miracle plant. And we have one of the best growing conditions in the whole country right here. We have the laws to embrace it. You guys are choosing to take us back 10 steps. This stuff cures cancer. You have to believe it or not, but I've seen it with my own eyes. There's medical studies that have proof of it. Can anybody else think of something you can grow in your backyard that cures cancer? Hasn't everyone here had...I've never had cancer, but I know people that have had cancer. I know people that have cured themselves with something they grew in their backyard. I've seen horses that were on their way to their deathbed, deathbed, 10 years old, can't get up, run with other horses. You juice cannabis, you get no high from it. You get all the CBDs, you did the pain relief, you did the cancer killing effects, no high. You give that to a horse or a human, they're going to start showing signs of improvement. I've watched a horse just recently that couldn't get up. It runs with its other horses now. It's 15 years old. Five years ago, it was on its weight of its deathbed, and she just started juicing cannabis for it, and you would never know this horse was basically on its deathbed a few months ago. It's like night and day. I've seen it cure skin cancer in front of my own eyes. I know people have had brain cancer, refused chemotherapy, went back to the doctor, even after the doctor, this is in other states, but after the doctor said not to try an awful cannabis, they did it anyways. Now the doctors are asking them how they cured themselves the cancer because it's gone. And so I really just want to make sure that we don't jump to some sort of new ordinance that's already more restrictive than the one that's already implemented, because when juicing raw cannabis or when making oil or anything beyond just going smoking it, six plants is not enough for most people, even outside. Some people, I said it in my last speech last year, some people spend all year to get a plant this big, and then maybe caterpillars get on it, or mold, or mildew, and none of it's even worth it. Yes, some people who grow plants as tall as this building right here, and maybe half is wide. Good for them, but that's not most people, and with the restrictive limitations you're proposing, people will not be able to provide medicine for themselves. And also, I mean, it may not be legal for someone to give it to a horse. I don't know the technicality of that. I know personally, if I had an animal that was suffering or a relative that was suffering, I don't like meth, but if meth was cured for cancer, you better believe I would start smoking it if I was told I had cancer. So if you may not like cannabis, and a lot of people may not like it, but it's here to stay. Prohibition has prevented it from being grown. I really think if the county were to take a different approach, embrace this miracle plant, pull in tax dollars from the people that are doing it legally, use that money to fix our roads, go after the real criminals, the people that are on our Bureau of Land Management land growing. There's no question whether that's legal or not. So you could take money from legal growers that we would be gladly to pay taxes on, fix our roads, fix this puddle that we call Clear Lake. It used to be a beautiful thing. Now we're losing tourists because of it. We could put money towards that. We could put money towards our Sheriff's Department, as long as it's being used to bust the real criminals, the people that do not need to be here growing and doing it excessively. But the way you were going about it is it's going to take it away from people that truly need it. It's going to hurt a lot of people. My business personally stands to gain from this if it were to pass because people are going to be coming and buying indoor equipment. I don't want to see that, though. If there's a negative carbon, if there's a bad carbon footprint, it can cause, you know, most people are not going to hire a real electrician to come wire up their stuff to, we're talking fire problems. And I just don't see why we should have to take our medicine indoors when anyone can grow any other plants outside. It's just the plant. It may stink. I hate that it affects some people, you know, that may have allergies to it. Some people are very...the lady before who was up here speaking, you know, she walked by, so she left, and she said the smell of marijuana bothered her. Well, as she walked by, we could smell nothing but perfume, me and the three people in line. We're all overwhelmed by perfume. I don't like that at all, but it's not my place to tell her, "She cannot wear it." I just know we need more time. Whatever you guys have drawn up, I haven't even had a chance to read it because this was all thrown at me last mail last night. I wanted to have a great speech for you guys to have a chance to do that. But I know any more time, I know that you guys need more education on the benefits of this plant, and that it's not just some plant that stinks. This is a miracle plant, and it needs to be embraced. And if we were to embrace it, this county, possibility, this industry is speculated to be $10 to $100 billion. That far outweighs any of our number one and number two cash crops in the country, even though it's a gray area legal. There is money in this, whether it's legal or not. That's probably to be disputed, but if it were to be embraced and... if it were to be embraced, and we were to put some of those tax dollars to good use in this county, we could get rid of the problems, we could fix our roads, we could fix the lake, we could equip our police department to catch the real criminals, and it's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was one of those people that the lady walked past, and honestly, I'm allergic to perfume, and I choked. I couldn't breathe, I had to bring fresh air around me. Okay, that's just the one single person.
Just state your name, please.
I'm sorry, my name's Terry Larson. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that we're dealing with here. It's a two-sided operation, there's no fairness in this, and there is no consideration for the patients. Um, when Mr. Coell put this thing together, he never engaged our stakeholders, such as the Emerald Union Coalition and the Green Farmers, in spite of the fact that two supervisors promised that they would be allowed to come to the table. That promise was never fulfilled, and they were ignored. Um, that's, that's not good. Uh, they need to have a voice. The people who are using the medicine and growing the medicine need to have a voice in this, and we do thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity. Um, so I don't really grow. Um, I am, I am a medical user, I have a prescription, I have several illnesses that medical marijuana does help. Um, I've also seen what it can do for people who really are ill. Cannabis oil cures cancer. I've, I have done it with myself, I have cancer on my hand right here. One drop cannabis oil, fifty percent reduction in the tumor in one day. Okay, this is my results. I watched it, and I took pictures of it, and there's nothing left on my hand after three weeks of applying the oil every couple of days. Okay, that's a fact. The other thing is that we also had a lady that had three metal, um, vertebrae in her back, and a knee replacement with a metal replacement. This woman had not slept one full night in the six years since she had this surgery. She came to us, and we gave her the amount of oil that could fit on the tip of my finger. Within a half an hour, she was pain-free, without taking anymore. She slept through the entire night without waking up for the first time in six years. She woke up at nine o'clock in the morning and said, "Oh my God, I don't even, I never knew what it was like to sleep an entire night without pain." Okay, so there are medical, valid medical reasons for this. Are the people abusing it? Absolutely. Are we in favor of illegal grows and grows in the forest? Absolutely not. We want to see regulation. We want to see it in a way that is gonna help these people that don't like the smell, that is gonna help people that, you know, are being threatened by people who should not be out there with vicious dogs. My yard is fenced, and I have a dog, she's a half Australian Shepherd, half a duck. When people walk by our fence, these people, the dog runs to them like she's gonna take their heads off. She's the most gentle, kindest dog you've ever met. I don't grow pot in my yard, but she does that to protect us. That's her job, and that's a dog's job. Now, it's up to the dog's owner to train it to do it the right way. She doesn't bark like she used to, because we spent time with that, with her, to teach her that it wasn't good to bark at everybody that went by. Again, that's responsibility of the people who would be doing the, the growing. This year, for the first time, I tried actually growing something. Um, I had my legal limit, and I did it in smaller pots. My yield was three ounces per plant, six plants, okay? So, I'm supposed to be juicing for one of my ailments. I can't grow enough with six plants at that kind of yield to be able to take care of my diabetes, which is what my doctor wants me to juice for, so I ignore my diabetes. I'm almost sixty years old, I take no pills. I do nothing at all from pharmaceutical companies, and I don't even take like Tylenol or any of that stuff. But the medical marijuana helps relieve all my illnesses. We talked about, the last time we were here, about the dangers of indoor growing, and we recommended at that time that it was not good to be allowing people and encouraging people to grow indoors because of the fire hazards. Well, guess what? Now we realize there's a fire hazard, yes. And not to mention the waste of electricity and everything else. So, um, now you're saying, "Well, you can still grow indoors." Well, indoor marijuana does not make good medicine. I think there's a lot of people here that have already demonstrated that that is not how you wanna get your medicine. You wanna get your medicine from the outdoor growing. That's what encourages the CBDs and all the valuable entities in that plant to become medicine, and it changes it. So we don't want to encourage indoor growing at all. Uh, I'm certainly not gonna grow indoors, and I don't have any here land, so I'm not gonna be able to grow at all if this ordinance comes up. In addition, you've got a problem with spider mites. I've actually seen people use bug bombs on their plants, and turn around and sell it to somebody because it had spider mites. Is this the kind of product that we want to be getting reputation for in Lake County, and giving to people that need medicine, or giving them things that have bug bomb poison in it? I mean, that's not good at all, and there's no way you can regulate that. When you grow outdoors, you don't have spider mites, therefore you don't need to have pesticides, and you don't need to have any kind of chemicals. Can it all be done organically? So, I certainly wouldn't wanna smoke anything like that or ingest it anyway. So, we want regulation, but not at the expense of the patients. We have to think about that. We have to, if we're denying our patients access, which this ordinance would do, then not only are you guys gonna face lawsuits, because I've certainly been filing one, but you're going to deny people who are benefiting from this plant the access. We don't have pharmacies they can go to to buy this plant, and right now, we don't even have dispensaries except in Clear Lake. And as another person said, riding from Upper Lake to Clear Lake for a sick person is cruel and unusual punishment. I'm sorry, but that's just unacceptable to even require or request that they do that. So, you know, going back, I know there's a lot of people that were talking about, um, the wine industry. And, you know, I, we talked about fourteen violent crime, home invasion type of incidents, and I would like to ask Captain Macedo, or the sheriff, if it's possible that we could get some statistical data on how many DUI deaths and how many DUIs have occurred in this county in the past year due to alcohol consumption and pills.
Ms. Larson, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to direct your questions to the commission.
Okay. But he did give that information when someone else asked that question, so I feel it's fair.
Because you came prepared for this discussion today.
Right, well, I'm drawing a reference that it's not just home invasions that we have to worry about in Lake County. We have a serious problem.
There's a way for you to request that information.
I will do that, thank you. But we do have a serious problem here with alcohol-related deaths, alcohol-related violent crimes, alcohol-related, uh, domestic violence, and alcohol-related illnesses. My father died at forty-six years old because of alcohol, so when I was sixteen, I don't wanna see anybody go through that like I went through it. And we're not being fair to our citizens by saying marijuana is a horrible thing when it's curing people, and we're allowing people to get on those roads drunk, and driving, and killing other citizens who are innocent. I've seen it with my own eyes. Okay, so, um, what are this, okay, we talked about that. The best thing we could do right now is, as a people, we need to come together and learn to talk to each other. There has to be a dialogue between the people who are creating this ordinance and the people who have a vested interest in it. And the only way that's gonna happen is if we all sit down at the same table. We need to teach the growers how to have responsible growing practices. There's no question about that. We need to encourage the use of organics as opposed to chemicals. If there's a smell problem, put that in your ordinance if it smells. There's a product that's organic that they can put on their plants that'll make the plant smell like a rose bush, or a pineapple, or something else. That's a very simple thing, and if there's a complaint, then code enforcement can require that they add that product to the plant in order for it to change the smell. That's a very easy fix. Why deny me the right to provide myself with the medicine that I need that I can't get anywhere else? I can't afford to buy it. I need to grow it. Why would you deny me that right when I'm not breaking the law? If you do this ordinance, I'm gonna be a lawbreaker every time I step out of that house, because I have to go to the streets to find what I need. And I'm not ready to do that. I came to California five years ago to become a part of this community and not be a criminal anymore. And now, I'm sitting here facing you as a potential criminal. Now, it's a good thing we're building a new jail, so we'll have a place to put all those people, but it still doesn't solve the problem. The problem is communication. The problem is that we need to learn to talk to each other and hear what we're saying to each other. I see people here sitting here, and they're not really listening to what we're saying. They're toning us out because they don't wanna hear us. We have to be heard because we are a viable part of the community. I don't sell it, I don't buy it, I use it for my medical use, but I wanna be able to be able to continue to do that. And if this ordinance goes through, I'm not gonna be able to, and I will be the first one to file a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's David A. Ledgwood, from the Ledgwood Winery, in the South California, in Joe Batum. I'm here under this ordinance as well. The twenty, or twenty-plus acres of land to grow marijuana is downright disrespectful, not only to me, but to members of this whole community. I have lived, lived out here for the past two years now. I have been under medical supervision by my doctors for my lactose intolerance. That means I cannot walk very well due to deficiencies in my body, lower hip. I need a shot to help for the same reason. I have a tumor in back of my neck that cannot be surgically removed or even dealt with by doctors out here due to the fact that it paralyzed me from the neck down. Medical marijuana is the only thing to keep me straightened, viable to my, uh, my depression and my bipolar. I have been diagnosed with both bipolar and antidepressant since nineteen ninety-nine. I have not been able to use medical marijuana because no doctor will prescribe it to me. But they will admit that if I do not seek medical help, such as medical marijuana, syrup, and Prozac, which I am taking right at this moment, then I could go to a, a state where I could snap and hurt people such as the ninety-nine Columbine high school, ninety-eight Columbine high school. We had two kids kill people for antidepressant bipolar. Now, if that is gonna be the case again, over and over, we're gonna see the same results. Nothing's gonna change. People are gonna be killed or be stupid about what's going on in the society. I am a young thirty-three-year-old adult who has been diagnosed since high school, pretty much, with a mild medical dis, uh, problems. I have no way to fix him except for medical marijuana. And if I cannot get medical marijuana, which I really don't give a shit if I do or don't, I don't care about the Prozac or so well, because like you pointed out, the pills, the worst pills of them all is Prozac, where you eat it up in the, in the pan you're in. Second is, because I do have mental problems, I have been notified by my family to stay away from them, and it's not because of marijuana, it's because of my mental problems. I would ask that you guys seek to lower the, uh, property value for, uh, people a little bit, so that you buy property out here, even if it's only five acres of land, to at least try to grow a few plants for medical reasons. I do need it, and I know many other people in this room probably need it, and family members that I have seen around me need it, but they refuse to take it, such as I, I do, because we feel that if we're gonna be criminalized for smoking marijuana, using marijuana, or any other part of it, we should be all in jail, in prison, right now, as of today. And I do not feel that is a legal right for myself or for others who have depression, anxiety, bipolar, or even other mental problems, such as myself. I have, only I have a few. I even have mental problems I can go back since nineteen eighty-six, but yet I refuse to take the drugs that I'm prescribed because some of them don't work. Since I came out here in two thousand and eleven, I had a doctor out here who is just a regular doctor. Tell me, do not quit smoking marijuana. Take the Prozac, take the syrup, and smoke marijuana, because all three are chemical-based things that control my mind, to keep my mind at ease with what I'm doing. And for that, I thank you guys, and I think I'll be back to somebody else now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Florida Hadley, and I hear everybody that smokes marijuana has rights, but what about me? Don't smoke, don't grow, and my family is forced to put up with this stink that grows near my house, can't open my window. What are my rights? I wanna know that. I called five different people in this county, supervisors, everybody. None of them returned my call but Frank. He was the only one to return my call. And I said, "Frank, um, Ferantino, I think his name, or..."
Ferantino.
Yeah. He told me to file a complaint. Frank said, "To who? Who are you filing this complaint to?" Nobody went out there. I called the health department, the agriculture department, every department that you could possibly think of, and nobody called me back. Nobody showed up. My grandchildren and I couldn't go swimming in the backyard, we couldn't open our windows. I mean, the population of Lakeport is what, five thousand or something like that? I don't know. How many marijuana plants do we need? Really, how many plants do we need in Lakeport? Maybe Lakeport should start growing, maybe the county should start growing it and selling it to these people, you know? But we don't need all this marijuana growing here. This place is beautiful, it's big, it's gorgeous, and but, nobody wants to come here anymore. It's ugly. We've got ugly people around here, so they're committing crimes. And then they, they say, "Oh, the sheriff does this." Well, what happens when the sheriff doesn't arrive in time? And somebody's stealing their pot with a shotgun and whatever, and kills them? What are they gonna say then? You know, I'd rather have him come in, but a lot of these people are just putting blame on everybody else. You know, if they would only just do what they want. And how many marijuana plants do we really need? Do we need acres and acres of marijuana? No, we don't. We don't. I have cancer. Cancer doesn't have me. I'm a survivor, nine years. I don't take any pills, I can touch my toes, I dance with my grandchildren, and I have a little glass of wine every night. And guess what? That's the best thing everybody else can do. Just, just be careful with your family, work hard, and that's it. And people with mental problems should not take marijuana. How many, you can't get on marijuana? And are you, are you healthy? Are you cured of your problems?
Yes.
Can you stop it?
Yes.
Can you stop it? No. But I would like to just, we have rights to, and I want rights. What are my rights? Anybody can tell me what are my rights?
We're trying to form an ordinance to help you with your rights.
Thank you, sir. I really wish, because I do not want this throwing in anybody's backyard that makes them sick, you know, and it does. You know what I noticed? My granddaughters and I were looking at this, and we sat out there. Not one butterfly, not one bird sits on a marijuana patch.
It's not true.
It's a lie.
On this plant, it did not. On this patch, it did not. And we sat there for days watching these plants, and we didn't even notice, not my butterfly plant was floating, these were not. That should tell us something.
Hello, first time, Bobby Goodwin, and I signed up on the first one on the list, by the way, and you had to spend an hour and a half since I've been waiting to get up here and talk to you. Why don't you follow what's on the list? First off, number two.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. You don't sign that list until you come up and speak. So, we didn't ignore you.
I signed the list first.
You should be signing the list right now.
I'll sign it right now for you. Okay, so we're getting over this? No, wait, I'm looking to have my time read for you. I'll leave and sign it too, so you have my signature on hand, so you get right through to the government. Check it out. Now, I have in my hands a brand-new certificate from Dr. Rosenthal, saying that I am allowed to use two-fifteen rights in this county. I'm allowed to use two-fifteen rights in this state. You cannot do anything.
Well, listen to me, Mr. Coell. Pay attention to me, Mr. Coell, I'm speaking to you. And this is what I'm gonna say. Ignore me, you bastard.
Ma'am.
I, well, I'm sorry.
Keep yourself in, in, let her go.
I wish to make my statement. If you were to legalize marijuana right off the top and tax it, you wouldn't have problems in this county. And second off- And second off, Mr. Rivera, you wouldn't have to build another jail. You would not need another jail. If you released everybody in there, you got in there on false pretenses as it is. Third off, I wish the state, Mr. Coell, if this is the best thing you can do as far as legislation, you need to resign because you are not doing anything as far as community level. The only thing I see is community obstruction coming out of you.
Thank you for dealing with this issue. My name is Brock Zoller. I'm from Kelseyville. I know this is a tough issue for you to deal with. You've been doing it for some time. But I wonder if we're really dealing with the real issues here. I think a lot of people are concerned, maybe not so much with marijuana being grown in Lake County as they are being grown next to them illegally and the crime that has come with it. I know that I am. I've been a resident of Lake County since the seventies, and I'm just appalled by the way things have turned out. When I pick up the paper and I see the link to crime to drug collections and things like that, robbery, murder. So this is what I'm afraid of. When my children come back here, they're raised in this county, and I show them the marijuana grows that are next to my farming parcels, they're just appalled, barely visible for everyone to see. Studies that stick in my mind are that if children in their adolescent period become habitual users of marijuana, their IQs are going to be lower than those people who do.
Oh, what?
I think it's very important that we control the general circulation of this substance in the county. I'm not sure that this is the way to do it with your ordinance here as it's written and proposed. Looks like to me that it's going to be making it something that larger growers are going to be able to do. And now, really what the people want is they don't want illegal production in their backyards. It's going to move it out to work. The farmers get to be the neighbors of the illegal production. It's not going to be up in the hills. It's not going to be harming forests, but it's going to be harming the same environment. The lake flows, they need the same, they get the water from the farms as same as they do from the hillsides. This is not really solving the problem. It's just taking it out of somebody else's backyard and moving it into someone else's. So we have to start looking at the real issues here. There's a lot of illegal production of marijuana in the county. And it doesn't seem, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that the amount of pot we're going to produce is way more than medicinal needs. This is a business, and it's a farming business. Let's start calling it an agricultural product than it is. People are growing something agricultural. There's more studies that show that the other things we grow here, pears and walnuts, are beneficial to your health than marijuana. So why should it be single-use? Let's call this beta-sme. There's just too much marijuana, too much abuse, too much criminal element. Does this really do anything to stop that? I don't think so. There's a law in the state that allows marijuana use for medicinal purposes. A plant or two seems to me as for medicinal purposes. Beyond that, let's just pass an ordinance here in the county that you can't have more than a plant or two in your yard. Very simple, too. And all of a sudden, you can't grow, you can't grow anything you got beyond that. It's against the law, and it's no longer a business. So just really what it is. So let's get the business out of Lake County. Let's not be the center of the marijuana production in the North Coast and perhaps the United States that we've become, in which I'm afraid this ordinance would guarantee only the larger, more illegal people to be out there picking up ag parcels and growing marijuana. While we're talking about that, since they're not really an agricultural commodity, all of the pesticides that they use in their farm stores right here in Lakeport that are suited only to marijuana production, as here as I can tell, things like hydroponics, none of the other crops we grow here use those things. And so that's a marijuana store. That's for marijuana production. If we, those things like that for legitimate agricultural commodities are heavily regulated. The use of pesticides is reported every single month to the agricultural commissioner, but that's not necessary for marijuana. Let's start using the same laws that pertain to other residents in the county and start reading, talking about what the real issues are here in marijuana production rather than trying to dance around the real issues. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gordon Haggan. First of all, I'd like to say that in general, I support this new ordinance. A couple of things I'd like to see looked at again. One, there's going to be the requirement of allowing forty-eight plants on an acre large parcel, no ag. I'm afraid that's going to concentrate more plants in agricultural areas. I think we need, any time you allow for the greater number of plants, I think you're asking for problems. It's going to be harder to control, it becomes more of a nuisance. Second thing is, I'd like to see a little more teeth put in the enforcement of this. People caught growing more than they're supposed to. They should have stronger sanctions, perhaps asset forfeiture of property, something that puts some consequences behind this. So if they violate the ordinance, they want to have something to answer to. This, back in 1997, or whenever the state of California voted the compassionate marijuana ordinance in, it was advertised as the compassionate marijuana law. I don't think there's anybody, anybody in this room who wants to deny a medical patient the use of this plant for medicinal purposes. Evidently, there is quite a value to it in that regard. But I think the problem is, is in the money that surrounds this prop. If it's truly the compassionate marijuana law, I'd like to see the price of it on the street go from a thousand or two thousand dollars a pound down to maybe fifty or a hundred dollars a pound to where more people would be able to afford it. It's all about the money. If the value and money wasn't in this, a lot of this wouldn't be happening right now.
John Moss, a citizen, cancer survivor. I believe that Rick Coell is emotionally involved, and we all are. We don't want the lakes polluted anymore. We don't want erosion. We don't want pesticides that are not necessary. However, however, I believe that an ordinance, I haven't read it, but I hope to do it in the future. We need to come together and make an ordinance by which patients can grow their medicine. I don't believe the county or Rick Coell or the planning commission, we don't have the right to interfere between a doctor and a patient. And we, even if marijuana is legalized, and Gera Mendy at the Democratic barbecue told me that marijuana will be legalized within the next couple of years. We need to get our heads out of the sand, look at what our neighbors, look at what South America's doing, and we need to be ready. And we need to be fair. Even if it is legalized, there is still the state law 11362.5 and the 215 proposition. The people of California did it, and it does stand. And as you know, there are challenges to what has been done. They're still going on up in court. In closing, I do want to say that it is a fact, and it's on the door of every bar, that the consumption of alcohol does cause cancer. And yet, we allow grape growing, and we call it ag. How can we refuse to allow patients to grow a plant that may cure them and may ease their pain of cancer, AIDS, and other things? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Moisek. I live in Lucerne. My family's been in here since 1957. I was just a little baby where I live when my grandma came up from L.A. And the reason I'm here is because my neighbors are too old to speak to you guys. They pawned me into being here and asked me to come and talk to you, so that's why I'm here. I'm here for safety. We live in Riviera's in Lucerne, which is one of the nicest places to live and one of the safest places to live up to this year, last two years. One of my neighbors has two rentals, one on Ramey and another one in Lucerne. He had me come over to his house here a month ago. He wanted me to look at it. So I looked at it. It was absolutely destroyed. The inside of the house was a girlhouse. The garage was twenty-four by twenty-four. It was a girlhouse. When they got, they slept. They just got up and left. They had holes in the back of the yard from the plants. Now, this lot is a hundred by sixty. The back of his lot, where they grew the plants, was probably, we'll say, ten by twenty. Garage, eight-foot fence all the way around it, and they trashed it. They left all their growing stuff inside the house. There were walls, there were holes inside of the wall where they drove their pipes through the, into each room so they could grow their marijuana. And it cost the guy fifty thousand dollars. That's what he spent to rebuild his house. Wanted to re-rent it. So he said, "Can you come and help me screen or run?" So he said, "What should I put in my rental to keep them out of here?" I said, "Put it in, no marijuana allowed on your property." He screened, lasted three weeks. Twenty people. I just stood there and listened to them, never rented any of them because every one of them wanted to grow. So my question to you guys is, we don't want to see in-house growing. We don't want them growing inside. Because they go inside, they destroy houses. They don't care. They want to grow their plants. So at least let them grow it outside. But you're saying that they can grow ten by ten. Well, you get a small garage, most garages are ten by ten. You can do a heck of a grow in there. You're going to ruin that person's property unless he puts restrictions on it. We've already had stabbing on my neighbor this year because I went out for the plants to get it. Luckily, I got a little off of work. I was coming home. The sheriffs were there. They did an excellent job, by the way. I back them up a hundred percent on everything they do in Lake County. But they were there, said I already got the person out of there. And we had another person that's eighty-four years old. I came home the other night, come up the street, Mr. Jones is sitting there by the drip wood. He sees me. So I just drive up, come up, turn around, and come back. I park my truck. I looked at the window like I'm looking across here. He sees me. He doesn't care about me. All he wants is that crop. So my neighbor is eighty-four years old, she lives by herself. She called me. I talked to her on the phone. I said, "Stay in the house, do not come out of the house." As soon as I see that guy dump a fence, I call 911. I stay in my truck until I see the sheriff showing up. They got one of the guys. So later that day at night, I took my dog for a walk. Walking down the street, by the drip wood, come back around. Here comes a guy dumping out of the street. You know, "Well, I don't like that. I have my pepper spray." He doesn't really mean to me, he just walks away. Next night, she owns the property next behind her. Same guy. Guy's growing the marijuana is in her property, protecting his crop. So basically, what I'm trying to tell you guys here is, our neighbors don't really care if they grow or don't grow. We don't want to see it inside. We don't want you guys to put them grow inside. They can grow it outside, but don't let them grow it in residential. We have, in that area where I live, we have eleven houses in a round block that grow. They don't follow their code, they got it. On the backside of their fence, they might have an eight-foot fence. On the other side of the fence, they might be six-foot fence. And they put plastic over it. I mean, they're not even code. When I put my fence, I have two properties. I had to build the fence after my mom passed away, so I had to redo the fence. Came to county, went up to the board, asking what I could put in it. They told me six foot across the back, or you need to commit an eight-foot fence. So my fence goes six foot across the back, then it drops down to six, and then to four, all the way around my property. There are people over there right now looking at some of those properties right there. They don't care. So we're just asking you guys for safety and not let people grow inside. They're destroying the houses. I wish I could have brought the pictures to you today, show you back what you did.
Hi.
Pull the mic down.
Pull the mic down, there you go. State your name and have a paper. Write your name and state it, please.
My name's Adrian Hodges, and I live in Lakeport. And I do not grow marijuana. I walk around town, I smell various places. It doesn't bother me. You know, I smell honey, some of them like smell roses. Personally, I wish it were legal and regulated, much like wine, where if it's made for sale, there's some sort of regulation. If you have a small mountain, grow it yourself just as you grow grapes. I see it as a very similar kind of thing. Like I said, I don't grow it, but I'm in favor of people being able to grow for themselves. The reason that, the impetus for me to speak, though, is from a small thing that I've heard is in the ordinance that I found very disturbing, and I haven't during my time sitting here heard anybody address. And that is that within it, it says that, you know, this whole thing about growing indoors and that the sheriff's department, at their discretion, can enter their home without a warrant, without any show of anything. And for me, this is extremely frightening because I grew up watching those movies of the Nazis stormtrooping into people's homes. And I don't think we want to give the police the ability to come into our homes. I mean, I don't care, you know, so I'm in there making my cookies or making my bread or growing my little vegetable garden. I don't think in America we should give the police permission to come into our homes. That is Nazi Germany. That is not this country.
My name is John Ross, and I'm from California. And I would first like to thank the commission for entertaining all of our ideas and opinions. There's quite a few today. And I'd also like to thank Rick for doing the work that he's done. I know that he's done a lot of work on this, and I appreciated his slideshow. Although maybe perhaps there was some question about the legitimacy of some of the slides. I would like to point out that he did a good job in terms of acknowledging there's no regulation, as the same we have with ag farmers currently. And I think that's a real big issue. But I think that, you know, in light of the fact that 215 and 420 are in place by the state of California and put there by the citizens of California, that it does need attention, it does need to be looked at and addressed. And I believe that this ordinance, on the face of it itself, would really put a lot of harm into them, 420 and 215, and bring a lot of attention, unnecessary attention, I believe, further to Lake County. I believe that if Rick would consider what we had last year when we had a committee put together and put a committee together, put a time constraint on that committee to allow the committee to come up with policies in the ordinance that might best reflect our current needs and not this hysteria that seems to be taking place on both sides. I believe that it would be in our benefit and to our advantage. I also believe that with regards to Sheriff Rivera and the sheriff's department, I believe it would help them as well. Because if this ordinance did go into effect... it would help them as well because if this ordinance did go into effect, it would cause much more and more devastation to illegal grows, and the sheriff's department is already overwhelmed with the grows we have currently. So I do believe that we do need an ordinance that compiles the necessities and the needs of our community and the patients, and also helps us operate a county in a way that we can utilize the services of the planning commission and be able to not over-inundate the sheriff's department. Currently, there's been comments made about the addition to the jail, which is a twenty million dollar addition. Now, we may or may not need more jails, but whether we need more jail space is really not in reference to people that need medical marijuana. I think the two should be separated. Right now, they're kind of all piled into the same category. So I would just like to say thank you for allowing me to speak and hope that we can get a committee together that can actually voice the opinion and views of most of the constituents here. Thank you.
My name is Ken Styritz. I grew up in Upper Lake. I left for fifteen years. I came back in nineteen ninety-nine, bringing home a few dollars I had and bought a piece of property up here on the Harless Springs Drill up in the mountains. I came here today just to share my experience because I never, never imagined I'd have this experience in my life. In the last few years, I've had, um, by the way, I operate a vacation rental business up at my property. I've worked fourteen years putting that together. So in the last few years, I've had three new neighbors move in in my area. One of them grows a big, huge vegetable garden, about two acres. They're always there to help me if I need anything. They're always there asking me what they can do. Uh, the other one, um, hard-time neighbor, likes his quiet, hardly ever see him, but he stops by sometimes to see how I'm doing. Okay. The third neighbor was an aggressive grower. Now, I have nothing against people getting their medicine. I have nothing against the good, uh, if good benefits are, are there in cannabis, I'm sure that will all get worked out at some point. If people don't want to farm it for a living, will be able to do so. But we're, I guess we're not there yet, we're still trying to work it out. But I came here today to share my experience with this one neighbor that came into my, my home. Now, hospitality is welcoming guests into your home or into your environment, okay? So that's the kind of feeling that we all should have in our home, okay? This is what I experienced. I was threatened with a large man's anita club on one occasion. On another occasion, I was told I would be F-U-C-K-E-D up if I didn't comply. I was falsely accused of going in this person's crop. I was told that I would be removed from my property. My guests were disturbed repeatedly with traffic and chainsaws and rifle shot. Pain guests that come into this county were quiet. Huge increase in traffic around my property. I told my business we'd be destroyed. So I just came here to share this. I eventually just backed down so I could have peace and let them do what they want. Okay? So anyway, um, I'd like to make sure that between now and the time that the ordinance gets straightened out so that all people can grow their medicine and those that want to be farmers and grow it for the good reasons it has, until that gets worked out, I want to make sure that there's some protection in the ordinance for hospitality in this county. Okay? I see the schools are getting that protection. I really haven't had a lot of time to look at the ordinance, so if it's there, I thank you. But if hospitality is not protected in ordinance, it needs to be protected, just like the schools and, and other things, okay? Because, um, people aren't going to come into this town if they're going to sit in a hostile environment, knock their luck. And my property is rural, so hopefully I, everyone doesn't get anything to me that can't grow it down, I don't know. But, um, just wanted to share my experience. Thank you.
If I could just have one more minute, there's a couple of things that didn't get mentioned that I thought were important. Cheryl Carrigan, I'd like to apologize to my buddy of twenty-five years, Wojo, Kevin back there, and apologize to other people for, you know, the bad apples in our community. And we do need to straighten it out, but that, uh, this is too severe. And I, one thing that didn't get mentioned is the cyanicide that the, um, all California wines and, which is fluoride, which has been snuck into our, not only our grapes, but our fruits and vegetables. And it's a big problem, deep through the barriers of your brain. So it's, it's just totally been snuck in on us. We recently found out about it, and it's been a lot on the radio station that I listen to. And, uh, so, and also the erosion that happens because of the vineyards that have been put on slopes, you know, even if the grading permits were issued, I think a lot of the motivation was the money that came into the county. And there is a lot of erosion. I think a lot of the vineyards are blaming, uh, cannabis growing on what they're really doing themselves. And the last thing I want to say is, if we could just have a dispensary, we've got one in Clear Lake, let's put one in Kelseyville, one in Lucerne, and one in Upper Lake, just three more, so that the patients can get their smoke, you know, or, or their oils or whatever it is without, um, doing anything illegal. And that's all I wanted to say.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Anneson. I previously sent you a letter, but I took some notes today. I want to applaud the commission for this ordinance. It does not say that those that need medical marijuana are not able to get it. Um, I understand that people with serious illnesses do need their medication. The gentleman that spoke about the economics of this county relying on cannabis to sustain our businesses, did you ever stop to think why this is? The act of cultivation has driven out the tourists, it has driven out businesses, um, or, or those potential businesses that may come here just because of the image of our county. With the interim ordinance that we have now, it is obvious, it does not work. You say cannabis cannot be grown indoors, then why are the large growers, why do they have greenhouses? My uncle has cancer. He has been using marijuana. He has not shown any improvement, so I don't know what this miracle drug. You state that narcotics cures cancer, hmm. Tax dollars, state of Washington passed the use of recreational marijuana, thinking they would make a ton of money in tax dollars. Well, that turned, that turned on them because you cannot tax medication. So they had their doctors write a medical prescription for their recreational marijuana, so it can't be taxed. I do not use any prescription drugs for myself. I have a knee replacement. I'm almost sixty years old. Um, I have arthritis, and I choose to use exercise and stretching to help with my illness. And maybe half of these, those in need should try that too. Thank you.
I've lived here in Lake County all my life. I, uh, see, uh, see this ordinance as, uh, something that, uh, didn't take all of the stakeholders into consideration, and I think that it's not, it's not workable. You need to, need to put everybody together in this, that has an interest in this. When you, uh, just listen to, uh, the county officials, the law enforcement, uh, the community development department, and so forth, you're, you are ignoring the bulk of the citizens. I, I see, uh, right, wrong on both sides, but this, this is not a ordinance that's going to be accepted, uh, by the people, uh, just in, in general.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Phil Murphy, and, uh, speaking of someone who owns more than twenty acres of ag zone land, I think this proposed ordinance is a great idea, and I don't want you to take any part of it. I'm just kidding. Honestly, it'd be a heck of an opportunity for me because I got a few acres of filed land that I'm looking for a use for, and I think I can make more money off the dope than hay. So, uh, would work great for me, but I don't think it would work great for anyone else or most people in Lake County. I think that the genesis of the problem that you're dealing with today began a couple of years ago when unfortunately the board supervisors decided to close all the dispensaries in the unincorporated areas of the county. And the recommendation of some of the supervisors and some of the people who spoke here today in favor of this current ordinance, uh, was that, uh, people didn't need dispensaries because they had the right and the ability to grow their own medicine in their backyard. And they wanted to see the commercialization, the profit, and they wanted to see those businesses taken off of Main Street. Uh, that was their concern. So basically, the problem we're dealing with today is one that was created by a lot of people here in this county. They had been, uh, one of the, the thousands of patrons of the dozen or so dispensaries that were open, all, or in many cases, grown their dope in their backyard, just as the supervisors had told them to do, as some of these other people that are, you know, pushing this, uh, this set of regulations had told them to do. And now that they're doing exactly what the government and some of these business leaders had told them to do, they're being told, well, you can't do that unless you want to spend a heck of a lot of money growing unhealthy pot indoors, using up a bunch of power that shouldn't be wasted on growing pot that can be grown outside. So I realized that when the issue of the dispensaries was before this commission, the commission did, I thought, a reasonably good job of dealing with it. They reached a compromise that I think would have been workable to a degree, anyway. It would have certainly lessened the problem that you're dealing with right now today, which is a bunch of people who don't want to be utterly surrounded by pot growers in residential neighborhoods, and that's understandable. I've always said from the beginning that, uh, as much of the pot production that's legal in this county should be centered on ag land like mine, where it's not going to bother a lot of people. I mean, I, there, where I live in the Big Valley, there's at least a dozen big commercial grows. And I haven't heard any complaints from any of my neighbors about any of these grows impacting quality of their life. I mean, you live on ag land, you know, because of the right to farm and the, the way the zoning is, you don't really have a right to complain about dust, you know, there's pesticides, noise, and all that other stuff. That goes with the territory. That's what you sign up for when you move there. So, you know, one more, uh, impact on your quality of life isn't going to get noticed a lot. Plenty of people that live out there, we're used to it. And that's, that's really where this needs to go. And I would like to see as, as much influence as the government has here to direct this industry to use it to do that, to try to encourage people to not grow in residential areas. And I honestly, I, I don't think that could be done without revisiting the, the issue of the dispensaries. And as someone who had just mentioned here, the idea of opening up a few gear to, you know, give people a, a legal alternative. Because here's the real problem. I think as a practical reality, Rick could take this ordinance to the board of supervisors in a month or so and probably get it passed as it is. I think there's probably three votes to do that. But the unintended consequences of that would be that, number one, you're going to push a lot of people right now that are trying to do things legally and follow the rules, you're going to push them right back into the black market where this whole industry originated and would be quite happy to go right back to very quickly. It can adapt to that, believe me, and it will. That's the direction this will go. You will increase the criminal element if this proposal goes ahead as it is. But the other, the other part of it that I see has been very problematic from the county standpoint is that I see probably getting close to a dozen individual points in this ordinance that will be very ripe for a legal challenge. And I think odds are that at least some of those challenges will be followed through on, and, uh, I think the courts will side with the people filing those lawsuits. I mean, you've got the, uh, the issue with C-CO, you've got the issue with the state regulations, but then you've got at least a half a dozen separate instances in there that would, uh, constitute an unfair business practice. Because essentially what you're doing is you're holding marijuana growers to a far higher standard of conduct than you are people growing any other type of crop here. And as one of the speakers mentioned earlier, we need to get over this idea that this is an agricultural crop. I mean, that's, that's, eventually, that's where we're going to end up with state law. And this also should be done in the context of the fact that next year, there may be two different propositions on the ballot, legalize pot for recreational use. If they pass one or the other, that will completely change things. If that doesn't happen, it'll happen by 2016, or the feds could step in and change the whole ballgame on top of it. So this, whatever gets done here, as far as an ordinance goes, people shouldn't look at this as some sort of permanent solution. It's going to be another, whatever gets done is going to be temporary, it'll be abandoned. So, you know, don't try to build something that's going to last a thousand years when you know you're going to need it for maybe a couple... So anyway, what I would like to see, and I, I know there's going to be a lot of reluctance to do this, because I know Rick's under a, a deadline here. We need to have something that can go to the board, go through the legal process before people start growing again. But I think that we really need to assemble a group of people, a small group of people that can work with Rick over the next month and bring something back, a tweaked version of what's been presented here, and, uh, you know, do it so that you can get some support from some of these people that are here today fighting, because they're ready to be on your side. I mean, just look at an example of the Sierra Club. From the get-go, they've been against pot. You know, they've been constantly talking about how big, uh, environmental harm it causes here and all that, but they're threatening to sue you. So, you know, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta work together better. We gotta take in to account all the implications. It can't just come from one direction. So I'm hoping that you'll recommend to Mr. Colwell to assemble with this small committee of people and see if we can at least improve this ordinance to the point where it's going to get some public acceptance and support. Because the alternative is going to be a train wreck. You're going to have more crime, you're going to have more lawsuits, you're going to have less confidence and trust in local government by the people that, you know, you really need to reach out to the most. So I'm hoping that you'll, uh, give that, uh, thought some consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Field. I'm representing Lake Hillsburg Property Owners Association. And I apologize, I already signed in earlier because I didn't know the process. Um, I wrote a letter as a recommendation of Rick Colwell, after I discussed some of the challenges we had up there. So he forwarded Article seventy-two to me, which I read, and I presented it to our board of directors. directors at a Sunday board meeting and asked them for permission to write a letter, not totally in support of the draft, but in support of stricter guidelines. So, I'm going to read that letter. "I have read the recent proposed draft ordinance, Article 72, Regulations for the Cultivation of Medical Marijuana, and have asked Lake Hillsburg Property Owners Association Board of Directors for their support and stricter guidelines. The board is agreeing to have a letter sent to support of those stricter guidelines. Lake Hillsburg Ranch is a rural real estate subdivision designed for part-time, weekend, vacation residents and a limited number of full-time residents. As a board, we have the responsibility to maintain a peaceful and quiet environment for the enjoyment of their ranch residents. Marijuana cultivation is exponentially our biggest issue. Our residents have expressed their concerns and disappointment in several forums. One resident purchased an undeveloped lot in the ranch and planned to build his dream home. He was shocked to find a large marijuana garden, a huge water tank, and trash on his neighbor's property. Now he wonders if he will ever want to build. Another resident had a marijuana grow of about 70 plants on his property by a tenant who had apparently signed a no-grow lease. Another member cut down Old Growth Forest and ordered a plant of his marijuana crops. The list goes on, but we have had a very limited assistance from the sheriff or planning commission this past year. We requested a civil standby so that we could cut down the marijuana without incident on a vacant lot, but we were told that the agencies had a waiting list. The marijuana owner harvested his crop without any interruption. We do not want the ranch to become a place to grow marijuana. We are a gated community, thus providing added protection for those growers that feel they are above the law. We ask that the planning commission take into consideration those who may support medical use of marijuana, but not to the extent that others lose the right to enjoy the use of their own property. Marijuana cultivation creates a strong pungent odor that is offensive and strains our limited water resources. We are seeking the help from the sheriff and planning commission to eradicate plants in a timely manner when they are found in violation of the law. We need the building department to enforce the no-marijuana cultivation laws and regulations for homes that have not had a final inspection. They thank you for your cooperation and consideration. On a quick personal note, I heard a lot of information here today about concerns of pushing it out into a residential area, which is what we are. So, I do hope that this ordinance isn't going to push more of these kind of growers to our area. And I also have to say, of the growers that I know are growing at Lake Hillsburg Ranch, none of them are in legal compliance with the current ordinance. So, yes, we do need help from code enforcement, sheriff, whatever agencies those are, that if I know there's all these plants out there, they're obviously not screened, and all of them are, we're at the six-plant regulation that I've been hearing as part of the original law. And I did vote for medical marijuana use. I think it's fine if somebody feels that that is going to help them and it's not a danger to them, but not at the risk of my rights. I've been at Lake Hillsburg since I was six years old, and this is the first time this year I've considered selling and moving out of there because of the marijuana. Thank you.
Just a minute. In your letter, you aggressed one or two times to the planning commission. One suggested you maybe change that wording to the board of supervisors, because they're the ones that have the ultimate police power to enforce enforcement of their regulations, not us.
Thank you for that. I had understood that it had to get through the process here before it ever went to the board of supervisors.
It does, but the enforcement of it is entirely a different thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coell has told you ultimately it will be my responsibility to enforce this ordinance and get it back, passes your permission, and then goes to the board and receives approval at the board level also. I have a few things to say. It's been interesting sitting here today, and I apologize to people, when I stepped out, I do have other duties and sometimes I get calls that I do need to address, so my apologies, it was no offense in leaving while you're speaking. Before I get started, I feel it would be prudent for the board, some of you know me, some of you don't, and for the members of the audience, most of whom do know me, some of whom I consider friends, and some of whom I am diametrically opposed with their position, but nonetheless, I still consider them friends and allies and supporters. Philosophically, I believe that marijuana should be legalized. And when I say legalized, I say, I mean legalized federally in all 50 states, in all local jurisdictions, and completely made to be something that can be used not just as medicine, but recreationally as a person so desires to have that use. In legalization, there should be taxation and there should be controls, just like there is with alcohol, with cigarettes, with prescription drugs. But unfortunately, that is not the case, and we are here to deal with reality. And we have to address the situation as it actually is. Also philosophically, I have no issue at all with somebody using marijuana recreationally. I don't see much difference between recreational use of marijuana and sitting at home and having a few beers, or some wine, or whatever it is that alters your senses. I'm fine with that. I do have issues, and grave issues, with the commercial growing of marijuana. The legal considerations that I bring to this board today are lofty, and I respectfully request that you listen carefully to what I'm about to say and that you take this into consideration when you make your ultimate decision. The violence associated with marijuana. Before I took office as sheriff, I frankly didn't know, and I will, by the way, I'll preface this by saying I was a narcotics officer in San Francisco for many years, and I saw all kinds of violent activity concerning narcotics in general, drugs in general, drug sales, trafficking, et cetera. Until I took office here and started seeing the daily reports and talking to literally hundreds of people from this county, and talking to my deputies, and talking to other agencies, and other chief law enforcement officers, did I come to the realization of how much violence is actually involved in the commercial production of marijuana. And that's exclusive of the unmitigated violence that is sent to other locations, like Mexico, for instance, where they literally chop people's heads off. They have a different way of doing business over there, but we have had homicides here. We have had people shot here recently. I'm not talking about years ago, I'm talking about recently. And we have had unmitigated violence here also. The captain earlier said that we had 14 reported robberies, home invasion robberies in this county since the harvest. How many have gone unreported? There were several people here who made that very point. They said, "Hey, we're scared to report it to the sheriff because the sheriff might come and arrest me." And the truth is that many, 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 many more than what we have reported have occurred and have not been reported because of that very fear. And you have to take that into consideration also if you're going to make a reasonable decision on this ordinance. The outside influences. I see a lot of people here I recognize, see them on a daily basis, see them when I'm off duty. And many of them are good people. But we also have an inordinate amount of individuals who come to this county from out of state with one reason, and one reason alone. It's to grow marijuana for profit, to make an enormous profit, and then leave their trash and their problems behind for myself and the people of this county to deal with later. The last issue is the profit itself. I've heard a lot of arguments here today, and I was listening very closely. And again, I had to leave a few times, and I apologize for that, but my duties do require me to do that. I believe personally, my own personal philosophical belief is that marijuana is of use in certain medical conditions, and I've done a lot of research on that, I've read many studies concerning that. I also believe that there have been many inflated and non-credible stories told here today about the virtues of marijuana use. In other words, it's going to cure cancer in a day, things like that. I don't believe that. And I don't think that anybody who applies common sense to an argument like that would believe it either. It just doesn't make any sense. When you have cancer, that's a very serious illness. I'm not saying that marijuana doesn't help, or couldn't affect your appetite, or help you with chemotherapy, or help you with other forms of treatment, and be part of an overall global form of treatment, but I think it's been exaggerated, and I think that the board needs to hear that from me directly. I agree with Phil Murphy on the dispensary issue and another individual who said that dispensaries need to be part of the solution here. I think that that is absolutely reasonable. Because if you're going to limit patient access, and I also respect Proposition 215 and the Compassionate Care Act, but we have to bifurcate these issues, because there's been too much in this room, while I've sat here for the last two or three hours, of mixing apples and oranges. And you have to start separating those issues and taking those issues on individually in order to get to the bottom line. I agree, separate from this ordinance, I agree that Rick Coell and the board of supervisors and the planning commission need to look at what's reasonable for a dispensary and what regulations should be imposed for a dispensary to make sure that it doesn't turn into a continuing criminal enterprise. And I'll give you an example. Recently, my narcotics task force did a search warrant here locally, and we took down an individual who unfortunately was former law enforcement. I mean, talk about an embarrassment, but he was, he was former law enforcement. And he was growing marijuana on his property, and he had all kinds of other enterprises going on. He had a police scanner in his, or a police radio that he had stolen from his former agency there to listen to us, and he had clear channels, so we can't even have private conversations. He had guns on the property. And he also ran a dispensary in Mendocino County. My deputies, to their credit, and I give them all the credit, okay, I provide them the leadership, but they do the job, and they deserve the credit. My deputies, to their credit, didn't just stop at his home, which was here local, they followed it up. He had two businesses here in Lakeport. There were laundering operations for the money that he was getting from both selling marijuana in this county and outside this county, mostly outside the county, and from the dispensary that he had in Mendocino County. We obtained a search warrant for that dispensary, and during that search warrant, we located bags in a floor safe, bags full of oxycodone, Percocets, and other opiates and opioids. This is a problem. It needs to be regulated, but that doesn't mean we throw the baby out with the bathwater. We can regulate it. I know, I know that's possible, and that's something that needs to be considered in conjunction with this grow ordinance. And speaking of guns and violence, this year alone, with my push on narcotics interdiction and taking care of this problem, which is a cancer in this county, it really is a cancer. When you hear these people talking about moving out, they're serious. They're serious about moving out of the county. And that does not help us, because we need that tax base. So, not only does that not help us, people not coming in here because they think that this is a haven, a protected haven for unmitigated marijuana growing, is a huge problem financially for this county, and ultimately, with all the talk that there is about the money that's being made by these little, you know, the soil producers, or the hardware stores, and et cetera, that's a drop in the bucket compared to the bottom line for our tax base, which is property taxes. If these properties are sold at bargain basement prices, or lay empty, or go into foreclosure, we're not going to see those property taxes, and that is something that needs to be considered. I know that we're talking a lot of different things, but money and the income that's generated by marijuana has been, has been put at this podium multiple times today since I've been sitting here, and it's been put to me personally, I talk to the people in the public all the time. I disagree with that. I don't think that you trade the larger scale for the betterment of a handful of businesses that are selling soil, or are selling depots, or selling fencing. I just don't think that that makes any sense. Had heard Gira come up here and talk about the spirit of Prop 215 and the Compassionate Care Act. Well, there was a spirit to that like there is to any law. There's the law and the spirit of the law, and we in law enforcement have discretion on what we, on some things, not on all, but mostly on misdemeanors and infractions. We don't need to enforce it if we feel that there's an overriding reason not to. My personal opinion is that the spirit and the intent of Proposition 215 and Compassionate Care Act has been hijacked and has been bastardized by organized crime, profiteers, and other smaller operators who are looking to make a quick buck. That is my opinion, after almost three years of serving as your sheriff here in Lake County and seeing example after example after example of that. Now, who is harmed by that? Ask yourself that question for a second. Who is harmed by the hijacking of those propositions, of the people's will? Who's harmed? I'll tell you who's harmed. The legitimate patient that needs the medication is the real victim of that. When organized crime, when profiteers, when criminals hide behind the thin veil of a proposition that was passed because of the decency and the mercy of the people of this state, that harms the actual patient more than anyone else. I've heard a lot of talk also about the, well, first, I hear a lot of talk about lawsuits. Let me just preface what I'm about to say with this. In the early 80s, I started in law enforcement, San Francisco Police. One of the first things that I was taught in the academy and later reiterated to me time and time and time again is, you will be sued. You are taking people to jail, you are enforcing things that people don't like, you will be sued. If you allow that to stop you, you might as well take the uniform up, hang it up in your closet, and go home. Litigation is a necessary evil. But I've heard people come up here and say things that are frankly absurd, and they're not based on law or any knowledge of how the law works. As a county, a municipality, you have the right to enact ordinances for land use. You're absolutely vested with that right. And those ordinances at times do clash with other laws. But believe it or not, those land use ordinances are one of the most powerful tools that a county has in order to control situations like the ones that we're facing right now. And to be chilled by the idea that somebody's going to come in with a bunch of fancy lawyers and tassel shoes and file a bunch of lawsuits is not a good way of digesting the information here. Those type of threats generally, they don't happen, and when they do, they're handled. That's why you have county council sitting right there. That's why you have other lawyers to defend your position. Anybody can be sued for anything at any time, and I really, really stress to this, this planning commission, that you do not allow those threats of lawsuit to influence... planning commission that you do not allow those threats of lawsuit to influence your decision-making if you actually feel, when all is said and done, that this is the right thing to do. Let me address some of the allegations of Fourth Amendment violations, because I really take that personally. When people say that we just waltz into somebody's home and start looking through their homes, I like to see that example because people make allegations all the time, and when I get down to it, those allegations are false or misstated or, or it's somehow posed to represent something that it's not. All right? We do have a, an interdiction program going on right now, and that interdiction program is, is one hundred percent my responsibility. I decided to do it. I put the implementation in place, and it's now being implemented, and it's working very well. As you've heard other people state, that we are getting caches of drugs and guns in record numbers. And when I say guns, I'm not talking about the type of gun I'm wearing here on my hip. I'm talking about AR-15s, I'm talking about AK-47s, I'm talking about Uzi submachine guns, I'm talking about Thompson machine guns, which, some of you may remember that from prohibition days. We have seized each and every one of those types of weapons in record numbers this year alone, mostly associated with marijuana growing. And the defense of the marijuana growing, or in the alternative, the rip-offs of the marijuana growing. You need to take that into consideration. We do not do worthless searches. We do traffic stops. I had, I was on the radio on Saturday with Herb Gura. He posted on Facebook, said that he was stopped twice with no reason. I went, looked, I said, I'll investigate it, and I'll be on your show on Saturday to respond because I work for these people out here, every, each and every one of them. Even if they disagree with me, I work for them. And I have a responsibility to stand up and explain my actions, and I did. I went on his radio show on Saturday, and I told him, you know what, Herb, I have a math tape right here that shows you were pulled over for having your license plate Okay? And after the show, we went downstairs and looked at his car, and guess what? His license plate was out.
Light.
Light, correct, the light. But under existing Supreme Court case law, we are entitled to make these stops, and if we have probable, we have probable cause to the stop, then we have probable cause to, for instance, run our drug K9s around the car. And if the K9 alert said we have probable cause to go inside the car and look for drugs. The bottom line is, and I have stated that I will not permit, to the extent that I can, within the powers and constraints that I have and within the assets that I have available to me, I will not permit the unmitigated sales of drugs in this county or the transport, or even transporting the drugs through the county. It is bad for our county, period. When I first saw this ordinance, there were certain things I didn't like about it. That remains true today. There are certain things that I don't particularly care for in the ordinance. But I, going back and forth with Rick Coell, and, and I appreciate his cooperation in this, and I know he's worked hard to put something together that he thought was reasonable. Going back and forth, he made some modifications, and I'll, I'll be honest with everybody in this audience. One of the modifications was the seventy-two plants on the Forty-Eighth. I didn't like that, I thought that was way too many. And Rick Coell went back and got it reduced. You know, people may disagree with me on that, but I think that seventy-two plants is an absurd number of plants to be growing, that that's a commercial grow for profit and does not meet with the spirit or the intent of Proposition 215 and never will. I'm gonna close by saying that after much reflection and consideration, I don't say this lightly, that I do, in fact, support this ordinance. Again, it's not perfect. There could be other things in this ordinance that were put into it, and then there could be other things that are taken out of it. But one of the hard lessons that I learned since I've been sheriff is that in government, there really is no perfection. You have to do what's right in your heart and in your mind for the majority of the people. I stand here before you with many people who are in complete disagreement with every word that I have said right now, and I respect that. And I would hope that they respect the fact that I truly believe every word that I have said to you today. That I believe that we must have this, this ordinance as opposed to the interim ordinance, which I feel was just not workable. It, it was, it was not workable. It allowed for an unmitigated boondoggle of marijuana and all the attendant problems that come with the grow. And I really want you to think in my final closing words about this. In passing this, you are not denying a dying cancer patient their medication. You are not denying anyone medication. Because there is a difference between the possession and use and the cultivation. And, and that is what's been really intermixed in a lot of what I've heard today. It's like the possession, the use, the cultivation. Where do I get my marijuana? Well, you know, I know people in Middletown who give away marijuana to patients. They just give it away. They grow it and give it away. I don't believe for a moment that anyone will have an issue under this ordinance with obtaining marijuana if they truly need it. If I was sick and I needed to drive a hundred miles to one pharmacy that happens to have the, the medicine that, that I need, I would drive that hundred miles to get it if I felt it was gonna make me better. Yes, is it an inconvenience? Sure it is. We have a lot of inconveniences in life, and we deal with them. But to allow for the continuation of the status quo, which in my opinion is just gonna make things worse in the next growing season, would be a terrible error on the part of this county's government. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.